Okay. I want to call the January 2nd meeting of the active planning board order. First order of business is Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
In this new year, thank you all for what you have done and hopefully will continue to do. As it stands, Jim, you will be voting tonight as we're down one member when the meeting started. I would like a motion to approve the minutes of December 19th. I make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Second?
I would...
Discussion?
Yes, like to have amendment.
Discussion.
I don't see anywhere in here that a chair who we voted to invite Mr. Smith to our meeting. Remember, we voted on that. We had that discussion.
We had the discussion, we voted.
And I got a positive, we voted.
Did we vote or was it just consensus?
Yeah, it's on the top of the second page.
It is?
Oh, don't correct him.
It's just that the actual vote is consensus was to contract.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that was an actual vote, vote?
It was consensus. It was a consensus.
Okay. As long as we're moving forward with that.
We are moving forward with it, absolutely.
Okay, that's all I know on that.
And I believe Mr. Smith has been, communications have happened, and we will be seeing him next Wednesday at our workshop. We'll see many times after that, but we'll see with the first study. Does that satisfy?
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Okay.
As long as we're moving forward.
Is there anything else really final? Minutes will be filed as... Enrolled.
Who want to vote on that?
I'm filing the minutes because there's no amendments.
Right.
Okay. Oh, business. Woody Woods, 3 Oriole Road, map 138, was number 19.
So we have a little discussion on that when they were relocating it, and I called them and talked to them. It is just a sonotube or a frost, folks, going underneath that. So I was concerned down with the snow, the planning board getting in there and doing a site walk and getting to see.
The question was whether it was a permanent foundation or a sonotube, and it's gone.
So it is sonotubes, which is a permanent foundation still.
Do I hear a bug?
The additions on the B camp on sonotubes.
You did? Already? These trash is different from my trash.
You want to just?
Yeah, a little glitch. A little glitch. So while we're at it, if you all notice, there is in your, you should have it or it's in your packet, planning board timeline procedures for subdivision applications. After having gone through this multiple times with some comments from those who know, I have put together a timeline for procedures that I hope will, as convoluted as this may look with my bright colors and things, that this might help us all to do things as they should be done. First thing I started with is definitions. Sketch plan, what it is, as you say, preliminary plan, what it is, and final plan, what that is. And I write to the book, and Article 5 is a sketch plan meeting and a onsite inspection. This happens within 30 days of receiving the sketch plan. The sketch plan meeting is to do nothing more than accept that we have, in fact, received all the information we need. There's barely any discussion there, anything substantive. Discussions about compliance with review standards or considerations of waivers have to be postponed until we have a subsequent review of the full application. The board may choose to conduct this onsite or not. If there's inclement weather or snow, we do not, we are not required to have an onsite inspection. If we do have it, the public is invited, and we will take minutes, and it's considered a meeting of the planning board.
Can I just say, it doesn't say may, it says shall. Shall?
No.
No.
I didn't read it that way.
On 5.4?
It says the board, the board shall hold an inspection. The board may choose not to, and that's right from the book. All right? That's why the references, you go back and forth to the book. The one thing the sketch plan doesn't do, it's not consider the initiation of a review purpose for bringing the plan under the protection of Title I MRSA 302. All it really does is we shall establish a file, and any and all information that comes in correspondence and mission shall be kept in this file. At this point, there is nothing to accept. We are just establishing that this is coming down the pipe to us eventually.
So what you're saying is we don't vote to accept the sketch plan? It just was in it, and here it is?
We've received it, that's it, okay? Then we get, the next big thing after that is we get the preliminary plan application. In there, as I said, under procedures, 6.1, A through D of the regulations in the Blue Book dated March 1st, read them. C, number 1, okay? Notify in writing by first class to me all abutting property that an application for subdivision approval has been submitted. You specify the location of the property and include a brief description of the project. Again, this is not a notification of a public hearing, it is simply a notification of the intended project. And again, just check E through F on the subdivision regulation books. Now, look at paragraph 2, section F, in section F, on page 14 and 58. Read the last sentence of the last paragraph. The board shall determine whether to hold a public hearing on the preliminary plan application. Application being the key word. Okay? Now, G through H, see the book. J, this is when we can approve or not approve the preliminary plan application. Once we've accepted the, I'm sorry, we can, read J, this is directly, where you see quotes, this is directly from the book. Approval of the preliminary plan shall not constitute approval of the final plan or intend to approve the final plan, but rather it is deemed an expression of approval of the design of the preliminary form as in, as to the preparation of the final plan. The final plan shall be submitted for approval by the board upon fulfillment of the requirements of these regulations, conditions, preliminary approval with any. Prior to the approval of the board, the board may, of the plan, the board may require more information, okay? Further study, new information, whatever. Okay, we can always do that. At this point, we have only accepted the application of the preliminary plan. We have not accepted the preliminary plan. I know the legalese is wacky, but...
Yeah, I don't...
This is from here. Just take your book and read it, okay?
Well, no, I'd like a clarification on something that's right in here, where it says it shall be deemed an expression of an approval of the design of the preliminary plan.
Just the design.
So...
That's something for discussion. But it's in here, okay? We approve the design, you know.
Does that mean that we are approving the basic premise of what they're wanting to do?
No, just the design of it. Legalese, you have to get into this book and clarify. The submission for the preliminary plan, go right to the Blue Book, as I've started calling it with familiarity. Go to the Blue Book. First thing we do, again, is the application, not the plan itself. We get an application to see this. Now, does it have all our requirements? Have they looked at everything we have said they should take into consideration? Have they made changes we have requested for provable findings of facts that we can relate to? Approving upon the determination that a complete application has been submitted for review, the board notifies the applicant in writing. Again, no, we have not. We have only accepted the application, not the plan. If the board, big word, if the board decides to hold a public hearing, it shall hold a hearing within 30 days of determining it has received a complete application, and shall publish a notice of the date, time, place of the hearing. Again, I'm going to ask you all to be, because we know where we live and we know the limitations, in a newspaper of local circulation at least two times, the date of the first publication to be seven days prior to the hearing. The notice shall be posted in at least three prominent places within the municipality at least seven days prior to the hearing. A notice of the hearing shall be sent by first class to abutting landowners at least 10 days prior to the hearing. All right? That's at that point, which is just before we have accepted the final plan. That doesn't mean we have, in any of these cases, we have not approved the final plan, we have not given them, you know, seal of approval, we have approved the application, and we are now making a pie out of everything we have in front of us. We're discussing, we're reviewing, we're taking in information that we give in. In short, the subdivision regulation book, what we do, we hold the sketch plan meeting. We can approve the sketch plan as it is. Remember, it's a vehicle to create the process. Then we are charged to approve or not approve the application of the preliminaries plan. I'm sorry, I made a mistake there. A preliminary application to approve or not approve the preliminary plan, and then to approve or not approve the application of the final plan, and then approve or not the final plan. So please, where I made this mistake typing this afternoon, insert the word "application" after the first, in three, after preliminary plan, or for the, of the application of the... So that's kind of a shortcut. Use it in reference to your book so that when we're up there, we're not going, are we approving this in all, are we approving the application, or are we approving the plan? What are we doing? This is what we're doing. So it's three steps with six processes in it. I hope that's clear to everybody. So we're, I hope it's clear.
What makes it hard is when we don't see them for a couple of months.
Yeah, I mean...
Three months, and we gotta, like the fairgrounds. Where are we with the fairgrounds?
Where are we with the fairgrounds? You know?
We were offset, we had things going, and then they disappeared.
Right, right.
I understand, this is what it says.
Right.
But why is it written so that we have to approve anything until the final plan? Why is it written that we can just accept it? And get away from the approval thing until it be approved and...
Well, because that's what's in the book.
No, I appreciate that.
Okay, I'm going by the book. Now, there are other things I saw in this as I was reading through it, where I would like to see us review and change words. Not when we're in, I think the, where anytime in here it says we approve the application, I think we should say we accept the application and we approve the final, the application? Okay, we've got everything we need. We have the water reports, the genealogy, not genealogy, the geology reports, all these other reports that are necessary, unnecessary. And that's, you read those in places where I've said, read, you know, 1 through 4 or something like that, we'll see that.
I mean, my whole interpretation of this whole thing is getting to the final process where the planning board approves the application, approves the plan, and what's going to be done prior to that. It's always working back and forth, back and forth, and I think just accepting it until the final plan.
It is, but until we have a change...
No, I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
The word they're using is accepting, so...
And this is a good show.
This is just a little short analogy of what it is, so we know...
We do need to address some things at some point, because I'm still stuck on that, on that word "design," approval of the design of the preliminary plan. I don't really know what that means.
Well, let's say hypothetically, I have a plan, and I'm going to build a subdivision someplace, okay? And I give you a sketch plan, and my sketch plan says something like, I'm going to have a road come in, and then I'm going to have a road going down this way and this way, like this, okay? This is coming in from the street, and this is a public road or maybe private road. But then I'm going to put in three other roads, and I'm going to put a house here and a house here. You know, I'm actually going to put in three, six, 18 houses on this. That's the design of my plan.
Okay.
Okay?
So we're gonna, so basically you're telling him what he's doing is...
You know, if it were my plan, I'd say, no, you're not going to put 18 houses in, you know, in that...
But it is what it's saying, it's like, you know, you're approving the design.
Well, then you don't approve it. Then you don't approve the application, and you say, come on back. You do not have to approve anything. Remember that. You know, or you ask questions. When we get the first time in, we get all this information, and we say, okay, we've got all this information. Thank you very much. We need to go through and look at it and familiarize ourselves, and we will see you in two weeks at your, after meeting.
Because I think it's, you know, at that point, well, it's in the preliminary, so...
And then, and then you get to your preliminary, and that's when you make, and even when you're in the final, you can make changes.
I understand that.
And even after final, complete, you got the Pope's blessing, final, you can go back and make amendments.
It's just that at that point in the process, it seems a little premature to say we are approving the design.
Well...
So maybe I'm just getting stuck with the language.
Since...
Well, it's in conformance with the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
And we accept it, and we're like, well, this fits with the regulations.
Fits with the regulations.
You can tell, and then if something comes up later, we still can...
We can always go back with those adjustments.
Look at the small details or something.
We can always go back.
Basically, you're approving the overall concept.
The overall concept, yeah, yeah. Now, mind you, this is completely, this is not, you know, like Ken said, we don't see these this often. So this is just kind of a read us digest to keep us familiar, because we're still, this is, this is our bible. This is our bible, and we have our ordinances. That's what we are doing. We're not, you know, making it up on the fly. Yes.
And I might be wrong. I think Kenny had said on this book here with the applications...
Checklist.
Checklist, yeah.
That the board itself could change that. We don't have to go to town meeting to change any of that, where the board itself can change it.
Correct.
Regulate.
Well, the checklist and application, we can change at any time. Subdivision regs, we'd have a public hearing for, zoning ordinances would go through...
Town meeting.
Town meeting.
But our checklist, like on our sketch plan and preliminary plans and all that stuff...
The checklist, we can change at any time.
Checklist is based exactly on...
Exactly, but if we change the checklist, we want to change the book.
Right.
Because the checklist follows the book.
Well, I'm just looking at a timeframe deal, like if, like tonight, we've got one thing on the agenda. We could work on these changes between now and whenever we all agree that changes need to be made and ought to be made. We don't have to wait for town meeting.
No.
That was just my only question.
I mean, I think we could actually change the word "approve" to "accept" without any problem. I would not be comfortable to let that, to let that happen if we had...
One in progress.
A proposed project in front of us. And I know it's a little technical here. We do know one is coming, but we do not have one in front of us tonight.
I've got two or three coming, I think. We've got another one lot subdivision on Basel Road coming too as well. I haven't talked with him. But if it's changes and the applicant doesn't have a problem with it, you know...
Exactly, because if you do change stuff, we could be into a one lot to 100 lot subdivision every two weeks for the next three years.
Right. And I think when we...
You're probably the same issues.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Sorry. No, just tell me, I got the floor. Just tell me, I got the floor. I think if we're changing something for clarification, that that is a positive result.
It's like you're saying, the word "approve" is confusing.
I think it has been confusing.
Change it to "accept," is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, change it. We accept the application because the application has met all the criteria.
It's complete.
It is complete. It has gone through, it went through Brenda, it went through Ken, it has come to us, and we agree that it is complete. And not be, I'll move the hammer, not because we don't... No, Brenda first scares me more. But if something has been missed along the line because they are as busy as one of paper hangers, then we picked it up, we'll say, what about the such and such?
And that's what's great about multiple eyes looking at something.
Exactly. So, and then we don't have to accept it. We say, you're missing such and such, we'll see you, you know, get that in here as soon as possible, and we will see you at our next scheduled meeting. If they don't, they're not on the agenda. Plain and simple. And, I mean, I know many times, even when we were upstairs, I mean, I even read somewhere where we had approved the sketch plan, and it was reported that we had approved the preliminary. It was not approved. And even if it had been approved, that does not imply approval of the project. That doesn't come till the very end.
And that's why, like I say, I agree, you just, until you get to the final plan, to accept it.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, approve it.
Approve it. See? This is it.
No, to approve it. It's just a lot clearer, you just accepted this spot, this spot, because you get somebody saying you approved the project. It's crazy.
Right, right.
It doesn't make any sense.
No, that's a good thought.
So, anyway, that, this is what I've done over Christmas vacation, so look at it, make that one change that at the last minute where I left a word out. And that would be a number three, approve or not the application.
You want to keep on this for a minute? Or you want to move back to?
Well, we have only one thing to do, and since you brought it up, Ken, if you don't mind, we will...
Go back to this?
Go back, get that one thing done.
All right, so this was the wood site we talked about. We scheduled a site walk for next Saturday, Saturday after.
Yeah, the 11th, I think.
Yeah, I just know the whole site's going to be covered with snow, and it's going to be tough for access for everybody. But if you're coming by Anderson's Old Store on 109 up to, up on Youngs Ridge down into So this site doesn't have any roof frontage whatsoever. That's the house there. They're looking at doing an addition off the side of this.
Correct.
Let me think, you got that dog home?
I don't know. Two places, I think I'd fence a year or nine.
So that's the backside of the house. Obviously, it's the neighbors over there. And again, it's just sonotubes under the kitchen addition that would be on that side right there.
That's a deck one.
The deck on the front there?
Yeah.
That's a deck, yeah.
So maybe that kind of shoots out of it.
Yeah, it is, isn't it?
Goes out over the water.
Oh, it does, that's it.
That's a new deck, yeah.
That is a new deck, yes.
Oh.
And an outside shower attached.
Is the outside shower attached to the house?
Someplace on the side of the house.
Yeah, and it sticks it out. So that's the side that that addition would be going on. So it's requiring that relocation of the house through the board when we're doing a foundation that extends beyond the outside of the existing structure. And I think we were talking lightly, if it's on sonotubes, it's less critical than, it's about 14 feet right now from the water's edge right there.
But that deck shoots out over the water?
Is that permitted deck, Ken?
No. But there was a deck there, they had one of those fire rings on the deck.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming their kids or grandkids was up using the fire ring and burnt the deck off this year, so he replaced it. And that's a lot of common, we hear quite often, is I just put back what was there. Well, all that requires permitting, so we can justify it was legally existing to put it on, because as other people are riding around the lake, we'll get calls all, because he had just changed it, we'll get calls about the new deck, and we just want to document that it was legally there and to replace it as well, so... I had a conversation with him, he's going to give us an application. I think I, when I looked at the old assessing cards from the 90s, I did see it on the older cards, so that addition would be going right in this general area.
Logically speaking, again, if we move that back, how much could we gain?
You could gain a little by bringing it into this area here, but with the existing camps on sonotubes, I think I would be okay that the addition would be on sonotubes. Obviously, if he goes to do a foundation in the future, then the board could look at moving the whole structure, similar to the one on Greedys we were looking at a little while ago, where it's, it is a foundation, it is just sonotubes, it's not like it's creating space underneath it or anything, but... It's not like, um, it's creating space underneath it or anything, but...
Where's the well and the septic?
Septic is right up in this area here, and I think they drink out of the lake.
Oh, I think you said that, yeah. So is, he's going to come in and, uh, sort of do a, forgive me, father permit in the deck?
On the deck? There's a well line going down to the lake.
Oh, for heaven's sakes.
That's the garage up higher. And this is where they just did the septic in the spring.
So aside from the deck over the water, how far is the building from the water?
Uh, he has it at 14 feet on his site plan. So, I write you can't get any closer than the existing, which this side is much tighter than this side, but as it goes parallel with this, it just happens that the shoreline goes further and further away.
Away. So where the addition is, he'd, he'd actually be further from the, is that what you're saying?
Right. I mean, it is small numbers that we're really not used to working with. Yeah, 14 and 19 feet.
That's without the deck from where the deck?
With this.
That is without the deck. That is the new addition.
So the deck is still, is a part of the structure though?
Yes, but I wouldn't consider it as far as, um, for the point of reference for not getting any closer to it.
What's the deck on?
Rock.
And if he comes in and gets permit for the deck, uh, is there going to be a different deck?
Uh, 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 no, he would get a permit for what's, what's out there now. Yeah. Like I said, they had a, one of those, um, fire rings on it.
Yeah.
And I think in May that, uh, caught fire and burnt the deck off, the old deck.
Lucky they didn't lose the house, I guess.
That's what I thought, yeah. Because it was tough access for quite a while.
Yeah. Discussion?
Still want to schedule the sidewalk for the last meeting?
Yeah.
First, Ken said it's...
Right.
Maybe impossible. Can anybody give me a reason why that deck should not?
Addition?
In the addition, yes, sorry. The addition should not be.
Well, I mean, the last one we did, I mean, um, Gavin was saying that would, normally, I'm probably going to misspeak here, Gavin, so feel free to correct me. Did we move these things back as much as we're pleased it was going for?
And each one's different. It all has different characters and different things. And the last one we were looking at was actually the whole house they were jacking.
Already jacking.
Already.
Full replacement. This one may not touch the existing foundation.
Correct. That one already has some sonar tubes and stumps and rocks that it's built off of, so it's just an addition on it. And if they ever come back for a crawl space or something like that, that's when the board can look at it and relocate and move it.
Yeah, that's an E1, isn't it?
Yeah, because I feel like even the addition under, like, it pins it down there.
I would say it's no more than the existing house because the existing house is on sonar tubes as well too. And if he was proposing the foundation underneath it, clearly we'd find at least 10 or 15, maybe even 20 feet to pull that back.
Right, right.
And at that point, then they realize that now they have a front yard on the lakeside. They don't have a front yard on the lakeside.
Very close.
Where he's not proposing any type of foundation under the house, it's just the addition side. I thought it's something the board could, could look at anyways. And we can still do the sidewalk if you want.
What is the, uh, what is the foundation like from that sonar tube that runs underneath it? And decent shape? Is it going to have to replace it?
It's all kind of latticy looking underneath it.
You can't really see it because of the lattice.
I didn't crawl under too far.
Yeah, 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 right. I mean, that kind of come be, I mean, you know what I mean, if the town they can do it and then they got to replace the sonar tubes under the other part in five years, but...
Yeah, I guess.
Other than that.
Yeah. Then that would be similar to the last one. We'd be looking at sonar tubes underneath the main structure. I think the other one had 13 or 18 new ones they were putting in and basically it was almost all of the others being adjusted, shimmed, worked or something like that, but... Yeah, there's some of Gavin right there.
Yeah.
I don't know, what are we? What have we been doing?
We haven't done a lot of them. Uh, the state's kind of changed their interpretations on foundations outside of, uh, that are not beneath the existing structures. Uh, and the sonar tubes, we've changed our definitions of our foundational ordinance definition of it to also classify for that as well too.
Another stump right there?
Right over there, yeah.
Yeah, so that's going to have to go?
Yes.
It's going to be a fair amount of D.
Well, that's, well, we don't...
I would say for the sonar tubes, you're going to have a fair amount of D as well.
Yeah, yeah. But actually, from that picture, is it a stump or is it a piece of log just sitting there?
I think this is a stump here. That's a piece of log there.
Yeah.
That could be another stump there.
Right.
Part of the struggle too is that there's just so much space behind the door to come back.
There is.
Flat land right there. The septic's not in the way.
There's nothing in the way.
It feels like there's just room for it to go back. And here we are at a trigger point.
And foundation definition, any structure that meets the building code.
We've had, uh, straw foundations, bill of straw, cordwood foundations. There's a lot of, as they say, new technology stuff that they're proposing as well too.
I suppose it'd be like critters.
Yeah.
Straw foundations are probably wonderful for you.
The water will freeze off.
I can't really quite say it, but...
Yeah, I'm okay.
It's always good technology with that.
Yeah. I, well, this, this one, which looked like a simple one to me, is a little... A little tough, a little tough.
So the 11th, you still want to do the 11th?
That's what we had.
Okay, 11 a.m.?
Yeah. We use snowshoes?
Yeah, it could be on top.
Well, it's supposed to be a four each tomorrow.
We'll get snow coming in.
Did they qualify to snow yet?
Miss Roland, you're out of order. No, I'm hoping it's not because I, I'm supposed to be in Boston Saturday or Sunday afternoon.
Oh, okay.
I'm on my drive down in the snow. Okay.
So we're doing that, keep the sidewalk?
We'll keep the sidewalk, yeah. Yep, that's the one. And it's the old business, yeah. Okay. Is there anything else you feel you should know about that?
No.
It's all on the...
On the 11th.
The 11th.
On to 11, right? 11, 11, yeah.
11, 11.
We need in here?
Yeah.
Yes, we need here.
Do we have a, sorry, but on that same note, do we figure out where our new secretary, uh, secretary from the board is?
No, and I know we do need to take minutes.
Someone has to take notes on that.
Yeah, we have, well, it, uh, the sidewalk, we have to, uh, it's considered a meeting.
Yeah.
You know, anybody could be there. We have to take minutes.
Do I hear Gavin volunteering?
Well, I was wondering the same thing.
I can't make the motion, but...
No, but...
Can I be two officers or worse?
Oh, yeah. They should be in come right now.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. So, um, and as the chair, I don't like to make motions, but I certainly want to. Any motions that Gavin might be...
I don't know. I think it might be hard to be the secretary if I'm one of the more vocal members personally, but...
Well, that goes for anybody here, so I'm sorry. That doesn't hold anything.
Yeah, no, I'm too old.
Was that no, was that a nice way to say no? Okay.
And I've got very poor family check.
Gavin, no shorthand.
Will I?
I think a motion that we, um, we gather for is the recording.
The executive.
Executive.
I don't think we're going to go, we're going to the sidewalk. That's on the wall. That's just out of the...
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion from anybody other than Gavin?
Forget it, forget it.
Okay, all on paper? I think you've been in a shock.
I didn't know I brought it up.
Okay, on to the business. And, um, just to pull a little bit of rank on you Gavin, I think at our next meeting, I'm going to ask you about our, uh, sidewalk. I'm going to ask you nicely to take the notes. We have a full board. You can look at that. Because when we are at full board, as you know, our former, um, associate member, Donovan, took notes.
Right, that's right.
So, right, right, took the notes. So, um...
He did a very good job.
And he did an excellent job, so...
He's going to be a heart of the ball.
Yeah.
The one that was always ball.
Yeah.
But to continue with this, guys, but please do for this meeting and, um, for the sidewalk. And then I would rescind, when we have a full board, I would rescind that motion, have that motion rescined. Unless you decide you really like it.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, thanks. On to the business. Director of planning, discuss proposed zoning ordinance changes.
Yeah, I think the next ones we were looking at, and I don't have the drafts ready yet. I'll hope for the next meeting. Uh, we had some discussion on the short-term rentals, the Airbnbs.
Correct.
That's one we'll be looking at. I've got a couple of, uh, ZVA things in the ordinance book that we'll work on too. And some more permitted uses we want to add into that land use chart.
Is that where you think the Airbnbs would start with the land use term?
Uh, as a permitted use, that would be one areas we'd add to it.
Yeah, and then where would we throw it into the D use?
I would think in the residential.
In the residential, yeah. An Airbnb and it's not a separate.
After the occupation or something?
That's what I was thinking, that's.
And there is a lot that goes with that besides, um, the, uh, you know, Airbnbs could take up quite a bit.
And we may find once we get into it a little bit that we're, that may be next use.
Yeah, it, it could even take us a year to get through it.
Exactly.
Um, I mean, because, uh, do we need inspections? For those of you who work at the workshop, we need inspections. Uh, what about, uh, you know, egress? What about fire protection? What about all of those states? Do they have to approve of insurance, uh, for, you know, all the way like that, so...
So you're thinking conditional use permit?
Uh, I was thinking if, if it met this criteria, it would just be a permitted use.
But it must still be...
Wouldn't come to the plan of board.
But then if it was in the shoreline zone or something like that?
I don't think most of them are...
Most of them are going to be there.
Right.
For most of them.
Or maybe we won't want to, want to look at some of those.
I mean, that came up in discussion. You know, is it something that has to be looked at? And then should it be looked at yearly afterwards, say by? And I'm not saying the fire department would do that, but would, as they inspect any, um, residential facility where people are, um, or pay-to-be, I should say, you know, um, rehab, you know? You don't just go to rehab place to get your knee, where you hardly have and no one's ever looked at, you know? There could be, you know, uh, if you're paid, it might come into something like that. There's a whole lot to, to discuss about it.
Yeah, I was thinking more from the viewpoint of shoreline integrity. You've got a lot of people in and out by tracking up the yard. How is the yard maintained?
Well, you can't have any more people and you have bedrooms and, and, um, septic's for it.
I mean...
Right, so just the condition, the condition of the lake side of the building in terms of just erosion and things like that, like...
Well...
Well, I think the first place, it would be a state-approved septic system.
Right.
And then we'll look at that and say it's a three-bedroom. Then we'll have to classify how many occupants per room in a bedroom. Because it's not one or two.
No.
You know, so you could be 12, 14, 16 people in a three-bedroom. So packing you'd look at.
All of those things.
Trash.
Each one would be different, just depending on the size of the lot. We cannot allow a non-conforming lot to do this. You know, in terms of the size of the thing, you know, and these kinds of things.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So there's a lot into it. And at least a lot of other communities, most down by the ocean, have already dealt with this. So, uh, we'll be able to gather lots of information from them as well. And, uh, Rockland was the main one that had dealt with a lot of it.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
In reference to this, uh, subject, I, I spoke with, uh, two of the professors of Southern Maine, um, in fire technology. And, uh, there's a lot of information out there and the main recommendation that they said to me was that, there is a fire marshal that's in charge of all this. Uh, we should request that he come down and speak to us in reference to this. Uh, the liability to the town, uh, has a lot to do with it. And, uh, they would highly recommend that the state fire marshal office come down. And they have, they put on programs to, uh, in reference with this.
Regarding Airbnbs specifically?
Yes.
Thank you, Jim.
I can, I'll get the information of who it is and contact and get it back to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
It could still be a tough place just to find where to put it.
Yeah, okay. See, um, this is a piece, um, from the Conway Daily Sun where, um, people were not really in favor of Airbnbs. And it gives reasons why... favor of Airbnbs, and it gives reasons why, um, turning your home into a business, and one of them, um, he wants, this particular fellow talks about, uh, regulating businesses operating in a residential neighborhood, for things like noise, how many people, animals can stay, of course, if it was in the shoreline, then it would be expanded to, you know, that sort of thing, um, I look, there's one quote in here, and I'm quoting from the newspaper, that means we have to take care of the dirt bags that may come in, now, those aren't my words, but that's right from, you know, there are people who are respectful when they rent, and they are people who are not respectful when they rent, he just happened to use very strong language, and...
And I think that was a plan of board member who was against regulation for several years, until one came into his neighborhood, it was, the shorter the term, the worse the tenants were.
Right, exactly, and, um, the, uh, there's been a lot of discussion in Hampshire Lakes about this lake areas and ski areas, but this is short-term rental, not, if you want to read it, long-term rental, bring it back, um, so, that will be discussed.
And I noticed some of the towns, when they broke it up, they broke it into three different categories, was they were just renting rooms, they were renting an apartment inside the house, or they were renting the whole house.
Correct.
So it's three different levels there.
Right, right. I'm just looking at the notes we had from the last...
You know, at the workshop, we were talking, making sure there was egress from the bedrooms.
Egress from the bedrooms.
Smoke and carbon dioxide detectors, fire extinguishers.
Yeah.
Um, the owner lived within twenty minutes, so there was a property maintenance person.
Exactly, that was, yeah.
Yeah, posting the nine-one-one, the septic in bedroom count, and maximum people per room.
Right.
Uh, requirement of insurance, certificate of insurance that actually showed it was, uh, uh, the insurance company knew it was short-term rental.
Right.
Posting a permit of the, uh, address on the property, so the renters knew the address they were at, parking, uh, the rooms we talked about.
And whether it was rooms or apartments, as you said.
And a lot of it is just, uh, what triggers it is when you're advertising it. Once you start advertising it, you put it on.
I mean, you look at Craigslist, and it's really quite unbelievable.
I think there was fifty I saw, when I looked just recently, and I'm sure in the summer, there could be a lot more.
Well, I...
Yeah.
Yeah, and I looked at, I particularly did look at further north, near the ski areas, and that list just went on and on and on, um, whether you were up in, what do you call it, waterville, or wherever, you know, what the ski areas are, um, and the other thing you want to know is that when you're renting, the age of your renter, you know, we don't want to, you know, we'll send you a money order, here we are, and you get there, and you're rented to six, sixteen years, you don't want them, your neighbors don't want them, whatever, so there's, it's very, very much, you know, a lot involved, and we have to, I think we also discussed docks at that meeting.
Yeah.
And, uh, since...
Couple of the other topics in the, on the land use chart was assembly occupations, similar to the wedding bonds, we've had to connect three or four docks to convince ourselves that those are permitted use, so we'll get something, assembly occupations, or we'll see what other towns are calling things like that, uh, another one, we've seen a lot of requests for was storage buildings, large buildings where they can store things in, uh, between four and eight thousand square feet, we've got the dock business, and they had a big storage building attached to it, but again, we had to connect a lot of docks to get into that. Bunk houses, we see a lot of requests for bunkhouse, that's going to be something we'll talk briefly on, I guess.
Yeah, the, the other thing with dockhouses, dock, whatever you want to call them, some people are using trailers, I mean, uninsulated trailers, whatever, you know, for the summer, insulated, I think there really has a lot, a lot to say, a lot to look at, and, and I hope, you keep in mind that some of the stuff that is or isn't on our, um, it's not on the table right now, more and more things are happening on every place, and we have to be prepared, we have to be ahead of the game all the time, we can't play catch-up.
Usually we try to do that when it's slow.
Yeah, when it's slow.
When I'm seeing that, so...
We have not been slow, and, no.
So we've added an extra meeting.
Yeah.
Free, free Wednesday schedule, the other thing is, um, having the site plan, conditional use in good neighbor, pulled out about zoning ordinance and make that a standalone document.
It would become a standalone document as a subdivision book is, so, that's...
And just anything commercial, you go straight to that book.
The other thing we talked about, which I'm sure is not popular, but when we are going to our zoning book, if you have notes in the red zoning book, they may or may not be pertinent anymore because of the changes in that book, and they, those red books are now obsolete, they cannot be used in any discussion, or voting, or anything, we now are in the gray book, which is dated...
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, yeah, June twenty-second, twenty nineteen, so, um, you know, we, we really, so many of what we have and what we do...
Does anybody need a new book?
Yes, we have them if you don't have them, do you have a red book, uh, gray book? You have a gray book, you've got a gray book?
Yep.
Oh, good, thank you all, gray book, oh, there's a gray book, you got a gray book tonight?
Yeah, he's...
He's looking for it, maybe in front of you?
No.
Those are your books in front of you?
What?
Oh, yeah.
He's got a comprehensive plan, too.
Oh, yeah, he's got the...
He's got all the stuff. No ordinance?
No ordinance book?
Can I see that one on top?
It's inside there.
Yeah, can I just...
Oh, it's chapter one thousand.
Yeah.
He's got a chapter one thousand, he's kicking. You'll lose that pocket.
So, um, Jim, can, can you get that anytime during the week?
Yeah.
Stop adding the...
I can't believe, because I thought Christina made it to home.
I thought she did too.
Would it try to...
Can you just check at home if you don't have it? I don't know that you got any last week, did you, at the nineteen, on the nineteenth? Did you get any books? Oh, he's got his little bag, oh, Just a Word to the Wise, that, there it is, right on the cover, Christina's pretty...
That the one you want?
Or that, wasn't it, that's the zoning ordinance? Now, um, ju- just a word, um, we can all tell you, that's a nice little bag, it's not going to work, it's not going to work.
Some of the members, we used to keep the stuff here for you, because it can get pretty cumbersome or something, you can find your cubby if you want to leave the stuff here or not, because it's hard, you may be in between holidays and just sat reading and typing.
Yeah, no, I mean, and there are things that, if someone comes before us, you're either going to come in here and make them crazy, because your books are in here, or you're going to go through your books at home to make sure you know, um, you know, you don't have, we don't have this time looking through, well, as we're sitting here, so, anyway, uh, are there any other things anybody would like to bring up? Yes?
We, we voted, I believe, to move forward, uh, on the dock issue for the town meeting, right, definitely a change, and, the subdivision, and I might have interpreted it wrong, there's, there's in your zoning book, I think it says, um, you got to know its body of butt is within five hundred feet.
That's for conditional use.
And the other one is just abuttes?
Subdivisions direct abuttes.
Just direct abuttes.
Conditional use, and it may be site plan as well, yeah, we try to keep them consistent on those two.
Yeah.
So, okay, then I'm still confused, huh?
Subdivisions direct abuttes.
That, that's it.
And conditional use and site plan is five hundred feet.
Five hundred.
Right, and docks are in their own category, and it is the state.
Right, the site plan has nothing to do with the sketch plan.
No, that's all just subdivision.
So it's completely different.
That's all subdivision, yeah.
Yeah, right.
So...
And is there anything else that we've talked about that's been, uh, stuck for us there, uh, that needs to go to town meeting that we need to go forward?
We're in January, so we've got a couple of months, we've got to at least tell them how many blocks we want held, lines, I'm thinking six, seven, eight, um, contracted yards is a big one, so, I'm hoping to just touch base with the planner a little bit, see what other towns are doing with them, and we want to be able to permit these things, because you need them, but they don't meet the definition of home occupation, home occupation is they have a sign out front, you drive by and you can't tell there's a business there, that works great for electricians, plumbers, things like that, but the excavation guys, the foundation guys, uh, the bigger, they have all the equipment outside, we piles of sand, there's usually a huge dock pile, we've only had a couple of inquiries on different ones, but the problem is, we keep having new ones pop up, and we either want to permit them, or we've got to tell them, uh, discontinue use and, you know, move, so the first thing they do is point to everybody else, and most of the other ones have been there for twenty, thirty, forty years, so, um, that would be a grandfathered situation in a transition to get it, um, so we want to see, as we look at it, again, talk to the planner, see what other towns are doing with these, and see if it's something we want to permit, and, and permit this process and, and have continued growth, or something we just want to ignore.
Well, my opinion is that the town has ignored quite a few things, and before it's done and over, it usually costs us more money, uh, and more problems, and anything that we can perceive that's an issue, it really should be addressed one way or the other.
Yeah.
You know, and it is what it is, I mean, you're...
Because you could call it, you could call it a permitted use with no regulation.
Exactly, but you have, you have businesses operating out of the house, uh, construction or whatever, uh, excavation, and they're fixing their equipment there, they're doing this, they're doing that, um, just like another one that came to us for, you know, a conditional use, uh, doing the same type of thing.
Brand new facility, brand new log, big yard, yeah.
And this one here has been doing it for the last five years or eight years, and then you've got this guy here that's been doing the same thing for the last thirty-five years, forty years, uh, there, there has to be a line there somewhere, and, and, and the ones that are doing it after the ordinances were changed to what they are today, need to be addressed, because they did it without a permit, and I know it's a big to-do, doing it, but you have to be equal to everybody.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, it's like the gravel extraction, and, and we need to, I say we need to, we need to address the gravel that's extracted from this town, because it, what's, that's happening is, we have to have an ordinance, whether it's something the planning board does, or the slugging, uh, whoever does it, there's two things, they're taking away our land value of this town, because it's, it's one thing when you cut a forest, it's another thing when you dig down fifty feet into the ground, and then it comes back at whatever, you know, a hundred years from now, there might be something there, there might not be.
The trees will be bad, the gravel will...
Exactly, so you're taking away the real value of the land, and if you go down south ways into Massachusetts, uh, for example, uh, this place is down there where there was mountains, and now there isn't any mountain, it's gone.
And if you look at that mountain, say, three hundred acres, and when you get rid of the mountain and it's flat, it's a hundred acres.
That's right.
So you've lost two hundred acres of, that's no land.
So the twofold there is, you're, you're losing property values, and the biggest detriment to our infrastructure in this town is the gravel business, one of those gravel trucks do more damage than ten thousand cars one trip over the road, I believe that we need to address this, and there should be a, um, a fee, so much per ton, uh, of all the material that's hauled out of this town, uh, to help offset the cost of, uh, of the roads, you know, whether it's a dollar a yard or whatever.
That is happening in places, they're charging.
A lot of these places are hauling all this stuff south, and we're just giving our town away, and we're, we're footing the bill for what they're doing, and we're losing property value, and we're losing environment, I mean, you got, uh, the one up on, one-on-nine there, I mean, they got, I think, a thirty-acre thing from the state now, they're operating out of, you know, opposed to the normal one acres or five acres we're usually talking about, uh, it's unbelievable, and they own three hundred and some odd acres there, they're not going anywhere, all that stuff's going south, and it's one of the biggest outfits in the world, so, they own it, so, there's no, we need to, we need to address this, and I really think it should be addressed by this town meeting, and I don't know who does it.
I'll touch base with the planner on that, that'd be one of the things we can talk about, I'm sure you'll have that right on the tip of your mind, the things that, just to see what other communities have done as far as, it sounds like a gravel tax of some kind or something, or...
And you know what I do then?
I always make sure that if there was a gravel tax, that it was, it would be, the money would be spent on an appropriate use to repair the damages being done by these trucks.
Well, that's up to the town meeting.
Yeah, you could say that, that fund goes into this line, and that line goes into major constructions, but...
And then, and then the road, the road budgets would be decimated, because they're like, oh, we have all this money there, so...
Well, the intention...
That we can lower taxes.
Yeah, because it is, it is a main industry, we've got some beautiful gravel in town, and like you were saying, as you go from the Mass border up and through, whether it's one-twenty-five or one-on-one, any of those areas there, you can see the old abandoned gravel pits, and that's why they're coming up here.
Right.
We have a lot of big companies hauling out this town.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I don't know how many yards are taken over here, it's thousands and thousands.
For forty years, over forty years.
Yeah, and, and I just think it's a shame that we're footing the bill for something that we get no service out of.
We're losing the environment, we're losing money.
You know, I appreciate the, the shoreline stuff, but there's a lot more to it, I, I took my grandson up to look at a piece today, he's eight years old, that they're cutting down there on the Flat Ground Road, and we met the logging truck, and he wanted to see where the logs were coming from, so I take him up, and I show him this place, and they got two piles of logs, probably a hundred feet long, right, and he says, oh my God, Grandma, we're not going to do this down there now, I said, no, he goes, look what they're doing to the environment, you know, and, and, and I said, yeah, you're right, you see what they did over there? You see what they did over there? That's another question. There's a lot more to it to this town. And the more we fill up, there's a old friend of mine would say that good land in town, and we have to start getting back from the roads, the more subdivisions you're going to see, and the more you can see how farther, 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 get away from the water and get away, away from the main roads. And I just think that some of this needs to be addressed.
Like Leslie was saying, say gravel pit A has a gravel tax of $30,000 and they're on Main Street. If I was them, I would want my $30,000 to go on the Main Street, not fix another road somewhere else that I didn't destroy.
But I'm going to say if I tax you, I don't have to tell you where your money's going. Your money's going into the town hot.
Yeah.
To be distributed, hopefully, by a group of people who do budgets or board and finance type people, where it is needed.
I know this is not all good.
Of course.
We have failing infrastructure. I mean, and Dennis is right. I mean, it's, I think we do need, we do need to do something.
Do you want that in the minutes? Dennis was right. Dennis is right.
I don't want her older life.
However, I mean, we've got failing bridges.
Yeah.
And that, what's being done about that? What plan is there in place? There isn't.
Right, but there has to be a starting place. There has to be a starting place.
And this is one of them.
And this, this could be one of them. I mean, we can't say, hey, already we've got, you know, this problem, so we can't do that. Well, if you want to fix this problem, maybe you have to do that. I mean, it could be this and that, not this or that, if my words aren't sugar confusing. But...
I mean, I know, you know, we have millions of dollars of money that we need to spend just on three bridges in town.
Oh, just on three bridges. I am all aware of them. I mean, I live beyond where those bridges go. I'm totally cut off from anything.
And these trucks have done more than they're paid in the destruction of those bridges.
And it would basically be a user fee or an end user would be if you added a dollar a ton or whatever, that would just be paid to the consumer, so, so the land owner, lander or property owner wouldn't be paying it out of his profits, it would just be added on.
Can we legally tax, well, we can't call it a tax, but can we legally put a fee on?
Yeah.
No, he's thinking about it.
We were focused on groundwater 15 years ago or so, because Holden Springs was coming, Nestle's were coming, they're all coming, so we, we were focusing on that at so much, you know, a dollar a gallon or something like that years ago. And they settled where Hollis and stuff like that, they never came, but the same discussion.
So, but if the state...
Well, the water comes back.
Would the state allow us to do that?
I don't know. So, let me get the planner.
Yes, yes, they do.
They do allow that?
And I'll tell you why.
I've, I've seen that.
Because in the state of Maine, it's local rule.
Oh, yeah.
So anything in the state of Maine that this model are against, the local government or the town meeting controls.
Yeah.
Make their own laws.
So you just have the glitch of, I'm already up and running, how can you all of a sudden come up with this new?
Because, because you have to come in, this is what you have there for material.
Yeah.
And you have an engineer come in, and this is what you got there for material. And then the next year, I want to see what the engineer says.
Yeah.
What you've pulled out of here.
This is what you have for material minus what you had last year is the cubic yard and surge.
I mean, they can haul a couple million yards off that, up here on 109.
Yeah.
And that is a lot of material.
And it's going into little bags, being sold.
And we're paying, and we, and we buy those to do our little projects with at home.
Now, Pitt's the pick on that one there is probably using the least amount of acting roadways of all.
I agree.
Comes out, takes a left, and it's in New Hampshire in two minutes.
I agree.
But...
But he might end up, before he's done, using the flat ground road.
Yeah.
Well, that's where he ends up, down there on the river.
Right.
Oh, yeah, I know.
I'm just saying.
Those are the main trucks going to the processing facility, they're selling to local community, consumers. So the, the smaller trucks are all hauling out of there too.
Yeah.
And then what about, I mean, if, if the state allowed us to do that, how, what would be the mechanism to go into these companies that are already permitted?
Give you a yearly permit.
And have been running for years to sell and say, oh, you've got a new tax to pay.
Yeah. You know, this is what it is, we can all grab all the time now.
We're not giving, we're not giving, we're not giving our resource away free anymore.
I don't think we should.
So you don't think they're being issued that?
Of course, they're almost going to be pushed back.
They tell me if I run it up, anybody say, I'm not surprised.
I don't, I know that there's going to be pushback from the companies and not want to pay it, but I'm, I'm talking about legal pushback.
No, not, not where we have our local rule. And it's being done in the western part of the country, it's being done a lot in Canada.
It's being done south of us.
Yeah, south of us, Ontario, Saskatchewan, and they go by the, would be a metric ton if that's the correct...
Right.
Yeah, metric ton, and they pay so much per metric ton. That's, you know, you want this aggregate, you, you buy it.
Yeah, my concerns are more on the legal side than...
Oh, definitely.
Yeah.
Come, come save me.
No, yeah.
Who's that?
Come, come save me.
Because you said it, he was right, Leslie, so you said it. But it's a very good discussion, and I would like to point out that this is a kind at a workshop, for those of you who, who cannot make the workshop. These are the discussions that, that we have to find a direction. Can read off the latest list of more priorities, but we can't keep pushing things off. And these are the types of discussion that come on to, you know, bring forward to you all.
Was there an alternate decided?
Oh, yeah, no, I've got to meet with them next Wednesday.
Okay. No, no information?
They will not tell us.
And the Sloughmen haven't met in two weeks, so...
I wasn't able to meet with them for a few weeks either, so...
Mm-hmm. I asked and I was told there were two applicants, but they would not say who. So, so, yeah.
Usually they come to the board and the board talks to them and then we can already get to it.
Yeah, well...
But surely, I wouldn't say usually, I would say...
That is exactly what's...
Back in the day.
Exactly, that's what is in our bylaws.
Right.
And our bylaws have been respected.
Which we just redid.
Which we just redid. And when I, when I went to the powers that be and I said this, I was told, quote unquote, just because they accept your bylaws doesn't mean they have to go by them. Now, I found that to be unacceptable, not by the person who told me that, because it wasn't a, a selectman who told me that, but that's what I was told. And, yeah, made me angry. Made me angry.
That's why you carry a hammer now?
You know.
That's a bad hammer. Her and the Pope.
Yeah, me and the Pope, you know, really, you know. Now, I'm mad at him, too, you know, Patriots lost the last game.
But it does make it a lot easier when your committee's a full. You don't, you don't need it just that other person.
Well, the, the discussion would be great, too, but we've got our one alternate already, we're not as bad as we were.
I appreciate that.
When you had time, that was...
Yeah, that was...
We have time, but I, I actually intend, and if any of the board people would like to go there on Wednesday to their next meeting, I do plan to address the issue of, we have bylaws, you accepted them, what's the point?
They accept them, they approve them.
Right. Well, well, well.
Yeah, sorry.
They're not a little stranger, huh?
You know, so...
That's all I have.
That is, that's all I had. And you only do, I know you asked about this on the 19th and about, do we have an alternate and all that? And I do apologize if what you think I'm skating around, give you an answer or something, it's just that I'm not, so...
So, are we going to schedule our three, two more meetings or not?
Yes.
Do that tonight?
They are scheduled. Okay, can I see that?
I'll get you.
Thanks. Okay, so we're, we're meeting on the, the second?
That's tonight.
That's tonight?
We have a workshop on the 8th.
Workshop on the 8th.
A regular meeting on the 16th, which I'll be absent from.
Yeah, and then a meeting...
I'll be off on the 22nd.
And we have scheduled the 30th.
I figured we could, if we don't have any pending business, we can work on zoning or something on that 30th.
I said there'd be a regular planning board.
Right.
That's a Thursday evening, 7 o'clock.
Thursday evening, 7 o'clock.
So we'll post that, yeah.
I think Jen has started posting, I thought you knew it was going to happen.
That was just us.
That was just us, and, and they go on the upstairs calendar for room availability.
We'll throw that on the website.
Yeah, get it on the website. And I did say that our meetings would be in this room, in our workshop, and I was asked if we expected, you know, how can you have it here when, you know, you have big issues coming in? And I said, well, we haven't, but we know what. So unless something different comes up...
Yeah.
You know?
We, we do expect to see Arnie next meeting, right?
No, we have no idea.
He told us second meeting in January, too.
That was, that was, that was a month ago.
We haven't got any paperwork.
Nothing.
Okay.
Nothing.
And that's what we go by, I didn't...
Yeah, so there's no paperwork. We, you know, don't forget the next time Woody does come in or Brad comes in, it will be to deliver that sketch plan, which we can say thank you very much. We will see you at the next meeting and make that our sketch plan meeting. Because, you know, as I said before, in reading that small little crib sheet I gave you, do you have everything in this that we need? If you don't, make sure you do. And he knows what is necessary in there.
They've got a checklist.
They've got a checklist, they know what's in there. So, and as soon as we get that, Brenda, I would like to get, have, make sure we all have that progression sheet of where we are in the process. I'm not sure which one we call it in our, in our new book.
I think we call it status report.
Status report, yeah. So we, we all have that, so we know where we are.
That would be great if you each had coffee and you would eat it. It's hard for Christina when we need to...
Yeah, and that way, if we each maintain it, we know.
I'll make sure you had coffee.
That would be great, that would be great. Anything else anyone wants to bring up?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'd like to drink.
Wow.